I think Ruth's here, she'll be out in a minute.
Yeah, she's stretching her back.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order and talk about safe and healthy housing.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Angie Mathias, here to present to you, give you an update, since we last spoke with you at your council retreat. So just to go back a little bit, safe and healthy housing basically works to ensure that rental properties meet a certain minimum standard for livability. In February, we briefed you on the most current proposal at that time, and just sort of outlined what was on, what had been discussed and what had been presented to the Planning Commission. And you all asked us to engage the public further, and so we have done that. And I have more information for you, but just to go back, healthy housing addresses minimal structural requirements, safety and personal security, electrical systems, heating and energy efficiency, moisture, waste, pest management, and chemical agents, just for a little bit more information. So in February, the program that we were proposing required that, first of all, all property owners get a business license, and then secondly, that they annually register those units. In order to register a unit, you had to, there was a required inspection. And so if there, the state has implemented laws regarding all of these, this sort of programming, or this sort of inspection process, and for, if there's more than just a single unit, I think it's, the trigger is at four, you can only inspect a certain percentage of those. And so some of them are governed by that, not all units would necessarily be inspected every single time. And under that proposal, inspections would either be by a third party, so by a certified inspector, or by the city, and the property owner could select whatever their preference was. And then after they had had that initial inspection, the property owner could certify, self-certify and say, yep, I continue to meet all of these standards, and I would pass the certification if an inspector did come and do this inspection. And then it was proposed that we had phased this in over a period of four years, because we do have a lot of rental properties, and it would be a pretty sizable program in undertaking. And so weren't sure whether or not to do that by zip code, or by age of unit, that sort of thing. So that was in February. Also, what we showed you was a fee structure, with a business license fee, a registration fee, and then inspection fees, some reinspection fees that kind of escalate, go up as, just to try to incentivize people to just get it knocked out and taken care of in the first time around, and then an administrative fee, if the person chooses to use an outside inspector to help us mitigate some of those costs. A lot of jurisdictions do that. So since that retreat in February, we did a fiscal analysis using those fees that we showed you to sort of see what the, what the impact might be. We held an open house on March 2nd that was very well-attended, and we had a robust discussion. And we'll provide an outline of what that was. Separate meetings with rental stakeholder groups, the Rental Housing Association, and the Multifamily Housing Association. The Rental Housing Association is sort of the smaller tenants, those are the, they represent folks that don't necessarily have the really large complexes, whereas the Multifamily Housing Association represents the really large property owners, the big sizable ones. And we had a separate meeting with the City of Tacoma and to discuss their program, and we've shared this with the Planning and Development Committee, and now we're here sharing with you.
So Angie, if I can, if I can, oops. So if I could just add in just a little bit here at this point, just to share with you, the reason we had the meeting with Tacoma was because a lot of the meetings that we had with specific property representatives, whether the Multifamily Property Owners Association or the Rental Housing Association, again, the, the big rental representatives versus the small rental representatives, they had reflected the fact that there were other ordinances in other communities that they wanted to, us to consider and evaluate with respect to advancing a proposal that spoke to a number of the issues that came out of our open house that we had with a number of the landlords on March 2nd. So I just wanted to emphasize, the reason we had the meeting with Tacoma was because we were hearing from more than one place that, have you really looked at Tacoma's model? They have a model that's balanced and is not as arduous as, you know, what we consider your advancing. So we think you could learn something from that. So I just wanted to underscore why Tacoma and nobody else, in terms of cities we reached out to at this point.
Mr. President?
Yes, Prince?
Hey, Chip and Angie. So I was at the first little roundtable you all did, and you had a myriad of supporters and opposers at it. Whatever we come out with from here, are you going to then bring that back out into the public sphere to do an open house or whatever? What's the plan?
Where we're going to conclude this presentation here tonight is frankly to ask you what you would like us to do. We feel like at this point, we have spent probably, almost over, a little over a year on developing a proposal. We've received a lot of feedback, and I think we're really getting close to being able to refine a recommendation that can be taken back. But part of the question will be to you as a council of, first off, what do you think about what we're putting on the table for discussion here tonight? And then the second question is, where should we go with it?
Okay, thank you.
So this is part of the fiscal analysis. So the first section, first portion is to try to determine what revenue we might generate from licenses and registrations. So business license fee of $150 charged to, you can see there about 3,400 single-family units and over 400 multifamily. And then registrations, there's more, but that's because oftentimes people own more than one unit, or more than one property, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to get multiple business licenses, and then registrations there. And so you can see that through that, there's about $700,000 that would be generated between business licenses and registrations of the rental units. And this is based on, on the, what we presented to you in February, of requiring that everybody do both of these things. So then to try to get at what money would be generated by the inspections if the city was conducting them, we looked at how many total units there are, so there's over 4,000 single-family units, and then you can see the breakdown, assuming that if it's between four and 24 units, only, you can only inspect a maximum of four, that's the state law. And then if it's greater than 25 units, you can only inspect a maximum of 20%. And so those are the numbers reflecting that, so a number, over 7,700 total inspections over four years that would need to be done. So that first year, breaking that down, and this is a little, I didn't do this correctly, to be honest, but that total number down there at the bottom, the 19,000, is the total number of inspections that would need to be done in that first round. So the 96, the 10, and the one aren't included in that number. That's 965 split between, assuming that half the people would want the city to do it, and half the people might want the, a private contractor to do that. So if the city was doing it, it was proposed to be a $50 inspection fee, so that would generate about $48,000 in revenue. And then we assumed, you know what, we know that not everybody has a problem property. We think that it's probably less than 10%. So let's say that 10% failed that initial inspection, and so, and the 96 would need to do another inspection. And so that then costs more $90 and generates some revenue. And then for the second reinspection, we're trying to get to the point that everybody is compliant, and so, in compliance, so just 10% would need to have it happen again. And then you can see by the third, we're getting down to just one that really is, is just not quite getting on with the program here and figuring it out. And then inspections by private contractors, approximately half with a $40 administrative fee. So inspections generating about $96,000 in revenue, based on the February proposal. So this is our total revenue, about $828,000 with those two put together. And then in terms of costs, this is just sort of a best, best foot forward in terms of staffing needs, assuming that to do those, all those inspections would require two new code compliance inspectors, and then an administrative secretary to sort of help facilitate them, and their success in sending out letters, and all of those sorts of things, and then an accounting assistant to help with business licensing and making sure that those things are happening. And then two vehicles for the code compliance group with maintenance and a loan payment of $14,000 a year, so about $420,000 in expenditures annually.
So, excuse me, Angie, I have a question here. Back, the inspector by the contractor, the $40, where would that be coming from?
That, it was proposed to be charged to the applicant, to the person that was registering their unit, is, so...
Would they be paying that to the contractor, to the city?
To the city.
And then they'd also pay the contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
That was what was proposed.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Question. So these inspections are taking place both prior to rental and during rental, so there are going to be times when these inspections are taking place and there are residents in the units?
That was what was proposed, correct.
Okay, so say you have a troubled tenant, you know, they're a hoarder, they've got, they're not maintaining their end of the bargain. You can go in and inspect the physical attributes of the apartment and know that things work or don't work. But I'm assuming that you're not going to take into consideration the fact that some of these tenants are not going to be, you know, respecting or maintaining the property?
That was one of the concerns that was talked about at the open house, and we've heard some very interesting stories about things that tenants have done.
They may not let them in.
Yes.
They may call you and say, these are the problems in my apartment, I need you to do something about it, but then the day you show up, they won't let you in.
Yes, we, that is a lot of what we heard at the open house. And that actually was the next slide that you'll see that touched on. So we had the open house in March, and as I said, it was very well-attended, but mostly landlords and/or their industry representatives, so those two housing associations. And there was general concern about this, both what Carol Anne was just saying, that we have, there's limited control we have over what tenants do while we're there, and about people refusing entry and all of those sorts of things, and having to provide legal notice and all of that. There was concern that it feels like it's government overreach, it's too much involvement in, and this is the landlords expressing their opinions, to be really honest. There was particular concern that properties, that we're saying, everybody has to be inspected, but not everybody is a problem. The city recognizes that there's only a handful, not a handful, but a small percentage of rental units that are the problem, and so why are we making everybody go through this process when there's only a handful of, of really sort of difficult landlords that aren't taking care of their properties? And then the sense that landlords are being layered with these new rules and regulations, and one gentleman said it, I think really well, that he gets that this isn't Seattle, and he knows that this isn't the same thing, and that Renton is a very different place, but that they just feel like they're getting, landlords are taking a beating lately in general, and that they're being made to be bad guys, and it's just getting hard to take. And they're just feeling a lot of stress and a lot of pressure by all of that, and they're just frustrated. And then at the end of the meeting, the King County Housing Consortium spoke in support of, in general, of safe and healthy housing programs, not necessarily specifically this one, but that they support these in general, and that they're supportive of Renton adopting such a program.
Yeah, and additionally, one of the major themes we heard in the open house was, you're casting a big net, but there's just a few fish you're trying to catch here. And we would appreciate it if the city would review this and see if you can be more strategic and specific in terms of going after the bad landlords, because we're not them. We know who they are, we know you have them in the community. We understand why you want or desire to do this as a community, but we frankly are taken back by the fact that we, as good landlords, are the ones getting caught into the system. And, you know, we were thinking about it afterwards, we're thinking, you know, the kind of landlords who would show up for this kind of meeting, frankly, are not the kind of landlords that typically you would have issues or challenges with per se, based on some of the representations made to us. But I thought it was one of the overreaching, overriding themes that we heard in the open house.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can you remind us how many cities have safe and health, safe and healthy housing rules?
Over, it's about 12.
There's quite a few, and it, I don't know the exact number, there's, it's surprising, there's a lot of actually rural communities in eastern Washington that have these programs, as well as like college towns in the area, so like Bellingham has one. I think Yakima has one, there's a number of communities. Tukwila is our closest partner city that has one, and I'm not sure about other more peer jurisdictions that have.
I, I will say though, that this is one of these issues that's a common theme in a number of communities. And soon as we update the matrix, we find out another city is advancing an initiative. And it's something that's, you know, obviously there's a need out there, or so many communities wouldn't be responding by developing certain minimum limits and thresholds for guaranteeing safe and adequate housing. The interesting thing is, this, cities are so uniquely different from each other in terms of how they choose to do this. And, you know, you look at the examples of our neighbors, Seattle and Tukwila are just light-years apart from each other in terms of how they've chosen to do this.
So as Chip shared, and the Rental State, the Rental Housing Association was at the open house, and sort of at the conclusion of that meeting, had a conversation with them and said, hey, we get you don't like it, but what can you work with? Let's, let's sit down and have a meeting and talk about what does work for you. Instead of just poking holes in what's proposed, let's talk about what might work for you. So we had that meeting, and again, they reiterated that the program was just too broad for relatively few bad actors, as they call them. And they suggested that we look at Tacoma, and that they've been working with it for quite some time, and so they would have a good opportunity to be able to tell us what's working, what's not working, that sort of thing. And that their perception was that it's just, it's too onerous and it's just too much. But Tacoma has, that it's been successful in, in bringing those bad actors into compliance without placing a burden on those good actors. So we got to sit down, we spent some time trying to look at Tacoma sort of just from the outside, their code structure, and some of their checklists and all of that, and how it seems to be working, and then had a meeting with Dan McConaughey, who is one of their code compliance inspectors. He was there as this was developed, he's been there for almost 30 years. And so he has a wealth of knowledge that he can share, and that he did share with us, in regards to this program. So the, a business license is required for all rental properties in the city. So if you are a landlord in the City of Tacoma, you must get a business license. However, they don't require that you register it. They require that you, when you go and you get your business license, you look at this, this checklist that's there, and they, you say, yep, I certify that if an inspector came and did this inspection, that I would pass, this property would pass this inspection. And then that's part of the business license, then they get their business license, and that's all kept. So then what the city does is, they, if they get a complaint, if somebody says, hey, I drove by this property today, I was out doing an inspection on something, and I saw this property, that place is a mess, we gotta go out there, that's, that's a bad situation, that's substandard housing. Then code compliance goes out there, and they stay, so they don't have to go onto the property and do some formal inspection, providing notice. They do an external inspection of the property, and they look at the things that are on the outside of the property. So they have a tiered system, a scoring, and they have a number of different points that things earn for those. So if it scores 24 or less points, it might not be a great property, but it's not something that we need to be concerned about, and there's no violation. If it scores 25 to 49 points, they get a letter saying, hey, we see you, there might be a problem, you may want to keep an eye on things there. If it scores 50 or more points, then it's determined to be substandard building, and infraction is, has been found, and a full inspection is required. So things that they're looking for are things like a falling apart or deteriorating chimney, might score like 15 points, something like overgrown grass or something, might just score five points. Something like, it's got, actually graffiti, they have said is worth 25 points. And then something like an abandoned car is like 25 points as well. So you can get there really quickly, or you could have a number of smaller infractions that might get there, get you there. So if an inspection is required, then you've, now you've triggered this provisional rental property license. And what that means is that they, so they've gone and they've grabbed, first thing, and Dan said this, if they get this, if they get something that says you need to go out and check this property and do an inspection, an external inspection, first thing he does is he goes and grabs that checklist and says, did this person certify that this would pass this, an inspection? Yep, they did, and out he goes. And so now they've said, hey, we trusted you, you didn't do what you said, you did, it doesn't pass the muster here. And so now you have to have an outside inspector, and they train all these guys, they have a class, and if you want to become part of this list, then you go and you take this class, if you're an inspector, and you become part of their, their list of approved inspectors. Inspector goes out and says, you gotta fix all of these things. And then the, the property owner would make those repairs, and then that third-party inspector sends something to the city that says, yep, this pla, this place is now certified. It passes all of, it's passed the inspection, and now it's certified. And they have to do this for three years, annually for three years, and then they don't have to, they no longer have to do this provisional measure, they can just go back to doing the certification and not having an annual inspection. Go.
So if they don't do this, what happens?
So if they are a good actor, and they just certify every year that they would pass this test when they come get their business license, then they just, that's all they have to do.
And if they don't do it?
If they don't do the repairs?
Yes.
They would kick them then to, gosh, what do they call it? They sort of have three tiers of, of bad properties, and at some point, it triggers to like a, a, I can't remember the word, but they...
Derelict.
A derelict property, yeah, and so then that gives them more police powers to go in and deal with it. And then there's basically like full-on, it's uninhabitable, uninhabitable, and they would start remediating that.
And they pull the business license.
Yeah, they would pull their business license, and they wouldn't be able to be renting it anymore.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I have two questions. The first is, what if they never register at all? How do we track renters? How do we track rental units?
We didn't ask that question of Tacoma. Our understanding for the City of Renton is that our utility billing has a really good record of what is, if there's a distinct distinction between a property that is being maintained by someone else in that bill, their utility billing, versus if it's owned by the, by the property owner and they're paying the bill.
And there's a second way we square that, is with the King County Assessor's database, in terms of if the taxes are being paid by the property owner at that address or at a different address.
And then the second question was, now that we're going to rely on the tenants to report the issues, are we going to have an outreach pamphlet, educating them on how to do it?
So, thank you for jumping ahead, but I'm gonna, if you will indulge me, I'm just gonna take you back to one part, because we are gonna get to exactly that point. The thing that we thought was really interesting about Tacoma's program, in contrast to other programs, is that they, when the landlord gets the business license, they make the, and they emphasize, they make them sit down and read everything that an inspector would be looking at as part of an inspection report, and then sign an affidavit certifying that their rental property meets all those requirements. So they're putting the responsibility, instead of assuming the landlord's doing something wrong, they're assuming they're doing something right. But they really see this as an educational process, to make sure that the landlord and the city understands, these are the criteria that we are evaluating, and we want you to make a commitment in writing that your property would pass that inspection before we ever send in any inspectors out there. And they lay all this out in writing, and make sure the landlord signs all of that, so they understand the implications as well as the responsibility as being a landlord. And it's really unique and different from what we'd seen in other communities as well.
So to address the, the tenant question, they do have a full-time landlord-tenant coordinator that works for the city, and that's something that they, they started with this program. So if someone says, I'm a tenant, and there's a problem, then they go straight to the landlord-tenant coordinator, and they work through, they work it through that way. If someone makes an anonymous complaint, which a tenant certainly could do, then they would follow up and go do that external inspection and see if it's a founded complaint. So some of the advantages of the Tacoma model, and this is sort of both from Tacoma's perspective and ours, but they, it demonstrates a level of trust on the city's part that landlords are, landlords are providing needed housing that meets a minimum health and safety standards. As Chip said, we're saying, we believe that you're a good, a good actor here, and that you're, you're doing something that's positive in our community. And it successfully targets the bad actors and not all landlords. It's not casting that wide net that had been expressed as a concern on the part of a lot of the landlords that we have spoken with. The code compliance person that we spoke with believes that absolutely, substandard housing has brought, been brought into compliance, that it's been improved, and that it has successfully addressed these, these problem properties. The prob, the program is self-sustaining, it doesn't, it's not, doesn't need to have revenue added to it. And then it's administered by relatively few staff. I asked how many complaints he typically gets on, on these sorts of things, how often he's out there doing these external inspections. And he said, you know what, I, I just got three today or yesterday, but I haven't had any for a couple of weeks. And so it sounds, and they've been doing this since, they adopted, I think in 2009. They took a year to do outreach and education, which we really liked that part of their program, and that made a lot of sense, that they took that time to make sure that everybody's, knows, that it's coming, knows what it is, knows what it looks like. And so he feels that through that, that they, and then that first few years, they've really got into a place where it's, it's just not a huge issue at this point in time, that they're, it's sort of very successfully administered by just a small staff.
Yeah, and Dan emphasized to us, no matter what the program is that a city develops, he believes that year is absolutely paramount to the success of any program in terms of just making sure that the landlords and the tenants, that everybody understands the rules that they're changing. And there's, he said, it's paramount that you have some kind of educational outreach component for at least, you know, a year. And he frankly owes a lot of the credit to the program. He goes, a lot of communities have just adopted this and just, you know, hit the gas pedal. And he said, he really feels like they paid great dividends in Tacoma for just taking a year, being very methodical, doing a lot of outreach to landlords before they started implementing it. I will say another thing that we hadn't thought about, or we had seen in other communities, is that idea of hiring a landlord-tenant act liaison that doesn't work in their department, actually works in the human services department for the City of Tacoma, that if people have, feel aggrieved in any way, because it can be more than just, you know, living conditions, that there's a specific person that, in the city, that can deal with them on the landlord-tenant act. And that's the person, for Dan and his staff and code compliance, they don't deal with the property owners or the renters. They actually deal with landlord-tenant act liaison, who reaches out to them and said, listen, I've tried to work the issue, I've taken it as far as I can, now I'm handing it off to you guys to take the next step. And that's when, once you get into code compliance, that's when it, it gets real very quickly. And I thought it was an interesting approach that they had a landlord-tenant act liaison who just worked the issue and tried to bring about the compliance before involving code compliance.
President? Too many years go by. So I, I was gonna say, so, so thank you for the presentation, and I like the, the, kind of the recommendations of the Rental Housing Association. And are you, are you saying that, that if I understand right, are you saying they're the ones that recommend looking at Tacoma?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so I think following up with some, some of Ms. Witchy's comments. First of all, I like the idea of targeting, and you know, I think, I think many of us can identify these houses just by driving by, we don't even have to stop, you can kind of tell. But, but I do, I do want to suggest that, if, if we go forward with this, that we really do partner with the landlords. That in many cases, you know, the landlord could be doing everything right, and the tenant could be removing the smoke detectors, or, you know, replacing the sink on their own and doing it wrong, or putting, putting old appliances, stacking them like cordwood beside the property. And I think that we need to go into those situations, recognizing that the landlord may in fact be doing everything they can do under the landlord-tenant law, but once somebody, you know, rents a place, it's, it's not easy to go, and you, as, as you know, as landlord, you can't just go, well, this is my place, and walk in and change it, you have to go through a lot of process. I, I would think though, in those cases, the city would, you know, maybe be a good partner. It's gonna get a little bit tricky, because the, the city too would have to respect the landlord-tenant law. And, and so, you know, one of, one of the big concerns I have, and it was, it was already addressed, but I, I think, I think tenants, it would be unfair to tenants, good tenants in a, in a clean home to have somebody from the city come in every year and look all around their place. I mean, it just seems like, like more of an invasion of privacy than, than some people would like. And so this, the way you're describing this, that, that wouldn't happen unless there seems to be a problem, so. All in all, those are some of my thoughts.
So, I had a conversation this afternoon, what's that?
I do have a couple more slides if you want, if...
Oh, okay.
Ready?
Okay, keep going.
So one of the disadvantages that, that we kind of saw and had concern about was that the tenant may fear reprisal, or may still that, be that element of fear there. But that's if they don't submit it anonymously, and, and we did ask Dan with Tacoma about this, and he said that he really... And we did ask Dan with Tacoma about this, and he said that he really believes that with the landlord-tenant coordinator, that that doesn't happen, that the, the situations get resolved, and that he doesn't believe that that's there, but, you know, we, there's no way that we can be for sure whether or not that's the case.
Mr. President? I have one more question, and this is an important one. Can a neighbor report an issue? If the tenant and the landlord are fine with the conditions, could a neighbor report it and then have it inspected?
Yes. It would be, it would trigger that external inspection, so a council person could complain, a firefighter could go on a response call and come back and say, hey, code compliance, we were in that place, and could you go by and do an external inspection and see if it triggers, because it seems a little on the edge there? And that's one of the things that we really liked about it, that it, you know, you start with, okay, trust, well, but now we're gonna go trust and verify.
Yeah.
We trusted you, and now we've got information that says that, that we need to verify, and so we're gonna go out and we're gonna do that. Talking about what Randy was talking about with the landlord-tenant stuff, one of the things that works really well, as far as we're concerned with this, is the city has, has taken out of that, they're just doing an external inspection, if it scores over 50 points, you go get a private inspector that we have, have certified, but the city's not going on, on your prop, it's not, we're not going on or in your property.
And what if the inspector finds unlicensed pets, drugs, other things that would be criminal?
So, we, Dan sort of touched on that, that typically, they wouldn't address those sorts of things, they just, they, they're focused on the list that's before them, they don't, they're not gonna call and, and say, hey, by the way, this and this and this is going on there, there's a marijuana grower, I mean, you know, I suppose if it was exceptionally illegal, they might say something, but-
And that starts to get pretty close to what we have now, which is, people take a look at a house, it looks, the, the activity there seems to be out of sync, maybe a little suspicious, and they'll call us, and everything from, we smell odors, to people frequently coming and going, and is it more than just a single residential house or something? So, I think, there's a, it, it gets real close to the point that we're already at with our code enforcement program.
So, we like this program, but really, we want to hear from you all, and hear what you have to say, and what your questions and concerns are, but if you, like, we just threw out some possible next steps that we saw, but we'd love to hear from you and what, what you have to say about it.
So was there any things that you saw with the Tacoma plan that were cause for concern? I mean, was there anything about it that seemed like it wouldn't fit with what we're doing here, or?
You know, I, I can tell you, with the planning commission, that fear of reprisals was a, when we reviewed this with them, and we haven't had a chance to set up a meeting with a landlord-tenant act liaison, Tacoma's the only one that has one of those for this program, and frankly, I'd like to have that conversation, because I'd want to better understand, there, we're not creating something where a tenant would have fear of reprisals from a landlord if they got turned in for something.
Mr.?
Yes?
Mr. President? So, Don, Don Person had sent in a letter, and I-
Yeah, I was just gonna talk about-
Yeah, okay. And I think, if I remember right, I think one of the comments in his letter was concerned about the cost, and I'm curious, like, if we did, so I think this proposal would have a business license.
So I do have an answer to that, because we looked it up, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but with Tacoma, they've got a tiered system for the business license, so they treat it as a annual gross sales, like you would a business. And so I believe it's zero to $12,000 annually was $25, and then 25,000 or more, it jumped up to 110,000, and that was the tier.
Yeah, if we, so, if you do like the Tacoma-
$110, yeah.
We, we recognize that we would have to update the fee structure and figure out what that-
Okay.
What that would look like completely.
But that's the kind of range you're talking about.
Yeah.
And there wouldn't be the charge for the inspections and all that kind of stuff that was part of that other-
Right.
... fiscal analysis as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I, having lived with this with you all for the last year and a half, I like this. I'd be happy to see you guys, myself, see you guys move forward and, and invest in what this would look like more, and then bring it back to us when it's three-quarter away cooked, so that we can say what we, what we think. I mean, because right now, it seems like a good proposition, but-
More meat on the bones.
Tacoma. I wanted to look more Renton.
Yeah, this definitely feels like, like it's less of a situation where you're trying to create this huge net, and everybody is penalized, so that we can drill down to the, the few people that are the bad actor, so. I mean, I think it's important that we protect the tenants that are in those situations, but I think this is a better way to, to get at that.
If the council feels okay with this, but listening to what Councilman Prince just said, we could, you could refer this back into planning and development, we can give you all regular updates, when the committee feels like it's ready, or committee the whole discussion, we can bring it back out. I, I heard Ed say, you know, when it's not, not fully baked, but close to, so that you can have him, but three-quarters away, so, whatever you prefer, we can do that, and then we can give regular updates to P and D, or we can leave it in committee the whole and just come back when we're three-quarters baked, whatever your preference.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. So, thank you. On the numbers, did they happen to share, were they able to share Tacoma, the number of anonymous reports versus the number, or is that data they would be able to share as we bake us further?
I believe that, yes, that is data, that's a different person that we would need to talk to, but yeah, that's, we want to have that conversation as well.
Because it would be good to know, certainly, if the, if there are people submitting them anonymously versus how many people are directly complaining, and then obviously, what those outcomes tied to that would be, in terms of when you had action taken against those problem properties, because I wholeheartedly agree that I want to address the bad properties we have, but I, as you know, probably expressed some heartburn about inspecting every single property early on when we saw this in committees, so, but I like where we're at here.
Great.
I agree with what Ed said, I, I think this is a great happy medium, it does, it's more palatable to the property owners than the original version, but it still protects those tenants that are living in, you know, undesirable conditions. And by doing too many inspections, you get lagged, you know, you might visit a property, and then because of the backlog, you don't see that property again for five years, and a lot can happen in five years, whereas, you can stay focused on, on the bad actors, and then if we have to revisit them, there's room in, in the schedule to do it, you know? But yeah, I like this so far, and I'd like to see it back at Cal.
And, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, one other detail, I, I think you covered this, but, it is, it would be nice to have a mechanism that even if somebody, somebody has a violation that doesn't rise to where they have to have regular inspections, but, you know, they got a water heater in the front yard, and they haven't cut the grass in forever or something, but there's a good way to just get out there and make them correct that, and, you know, we, we want to have a way to just, just get those corrections in that's easy, that the enforcer can go by and do that. So, so I guess where I'm going is, we wouldn't want them to go, but you scored less than 24 points, so you're good to go. I mean, you'd really want them to follow up and correct whatever-
Run the regular code compliance process?
Right, the regular code compliance, that would still apply.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be like a restaurant inspection.
Yeah.
Your freezer's at 34 degrees.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll have to get the happy face.
You put a rating in the front window.
Yeah. I, I hope, if I may, I, I hope somewhere or two, that the criteria could apply to, you know, I, I don't want to get into, you know, having design standards or something, but when, when people have used like irregular materials to fix windows, or, you know, the, the fascia came off, so they just took crummy sheet metal and, and nailed it up there, or whatever, I hope we can-
Biz queen.
Yeah, or biz queen or something, I hope we have a way that we can go after, I mean, things that maybe are, are just aesthetic, but they still give an impression, the property's rundown, and I hope we can capture those somehow.
For, for issues regarding the outside and appearance, we still have the property maintenance code, and we would deal with that, just as we typically would today, through our code enforcement staff.
Yeah, okay. So, I presume, like, a lot of the interior stuff is, is life safety, I, you know, we, we're not gonna make somebody bring their 1950s house up to a 2017 house, but, but on the out, yeah, on the outside, we want to make sure it, it looks attractive and doesn't look rundown.
Exactly, within one exception being orange shag carpeting.
That comes out no matter what. Thanks. Okay, appreciate, appreciate it.
There's a, there's a rule against that somewhere, I'm sure. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, I think we've, we don't need to take-
So the, yeah, at the, if you do nothing, it'll just stay in committee, and we'll bring it back. If you want to have planning development, take a look at it, you can refer it tonight, back to them, whatever your preference is.
I'm fine with whatever the council wants to do.
Fine. Refer it back to-
I think the idea was it would go back to your committee, but then, once it was three-quarters baked, come back to the Cal.
Yeah. So if we do nothing, it goes back?
No.
If you do nothing, it stays here.
Oh, we don't want to do that.
Tonight during the council meeting, you can, somebody can make a motion to refer-
I'll, I'll refer it to council, back into Andy.
All right. That's good.
Okay.
Perfect.
You're jumping the gun.
Jumping ahead.
He's just practicing.
Thank you very much.
I'll refer you, I mean, it's-
A good solution to a very cumbersome problem, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.